I call the eight, November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, three P M session of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors, remind you that if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item matters presented by the public that we will take up later in the meeting this evening. Again, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming out and being a part of your county government. Our first business item of consideration is the items of consent. What is the pleasure of the board in regard to the items of consent?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the items of consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. At this time, we have a special presentation that we would like to acknowledge. As with the changes of the season, there are always opportunities that we can seek out those, whether it be shelter, and in instance today, we're going to find out the needs that we can help as far as apparel. Next week, starting somewhat with Friday consistently for the next ten to fifteen days, it's going to be in the twenties, early in the morning. Monday and Tuesday of next week, it's going to be in the teens. And having said that, there's always need. We have representatives from the Campbell Foundation, we have a representative from A E P or Appalachian Power, and we have some representatives from Walmart with us here today. I'll ask those representing this special announcement to come forward to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First, I start by saying thank you to Deborah Buchanan for starting this effort. I don't know how many years you've been doing it, but it's
Twenty-nine.
Awesome. Awesome work you have done over those years as far as my foundation, the Campbell Family Group, Appalachian Power, Walmart. It just felt so fitting to help with that cause. We're able to do that, and it would be remiss on our part if we didn't. As Jim said, the temperatures are getting colder. There are plenty of people that are in dire need of these coats, which you have been doing for so many years, and it's an honor and a pleasure for us to participate with that and help this community any way we can. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Amanda Cox with Appalachian Power. Just kind of want to echo what Clay was saying about our commitment to this community, just like Deborah has such a strong commitment. We're really excited and happy to be a part of one of the many things that she does for Henry County. So, you know, Clay and I like to put our heads together and figure out ways that we can really make an impact and really help the citizens of Martinsville, Henry County, and we thought this was really fitting. So, Deborah, thank you very much for allowing us to participate and to be a part of your really big event that has been so successful for so many years. You have the chamber who basically, Brunel was shopping for us, trying to figure out which coat would be best. So, she got a lot of different colors and a lot of styles, so really want to thank Brunel. And then, of course, Walmart, who is a chamber member and also is a sponsor of this as well. So, we feel like we're going to make a really big impact and help people that need it the most, and that's what we're here for. So, thank you for letting us be a part of it.
Thank you. Can I say something? Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Vanessa, one of the coaches at Martinsville Walmart, and I was very pleased when Brunel and Sandy Gray called and asked us to participate with the same overcomes with the coat rally that they had going on to donate for the children. And I know Deborah, you come to Walmart a lot, the shoes and stuff, so I know you from that, and we are always glad to help, we're always happy to help. I was really excited myself last night when I was getting your coats together. I was just excited as if I was going to get one myself. So, I think it's a wonderful thing. I think it's great, and I just love the way the curtains are hanging right there. I think it's beautiful and laying right here. I think it's real beautiful, and I appreciate you all for using Walmart and helping us as well as helping with kids.
Brunel, would you like to offer a few words?
Absolutely.
To our chairman and members of the board supervisors, it was a pleasure to spend their money. C-Hague was excited for the opportunity to connect, not just to support the cause, but to give back and to be a part of facilitating the purchase, but it was nothing like spending somebody else's money the first day of this morning. And it puts you in a season not just gratitude, but of giving, and we should be that way all year round, but I tell you, they made it so easy today. It was a joy. The Walmart team did a great job of pulling for us and making sure we had everything we needed. They packaged, they helped load, and then the team here branded was instrumental help when we brought them to the administration building today. So, a collaborative effort, and we're giving back to the village, and they're going to come in very handy next week when those temperatures drop. So, how timely. There are two hundred and forty coats going to go out into this community to keep some kids warm. So, thank you for all of your efforts, Ms. Buchanan.
If you all will hold tight for just a moment, I'm going to ask Supervisor Buchanan to offer a few comments, and then we would like to do a picture with all of you.
Thank you, Jim.
Could I get the mic better?
As I said to Clay, it's been twenty-nine years, and usually I'm not at a loss for words at all, but when Amanda called me and she said that Clay Campbell with the Campbell Foundation, as well as A E P, wanted to donate some coats for the Coat Drive for Kids, they thought it was a good thing to do, and I said, okay, a few coats, that's great. And when I walked in here, I was amazed. I mean, I was at a loss for words, and I told Amanda when she came in, I said, Amanda, y'all don't do anything small. Everything you do is big, and I guess that's because Clay Campbell handles the Martinsville Speedway. Everything's big, but it really did take my breath when I saw the amount of coats that y'all have donated. And if I only had an hour or two to tell you the stories of grandparents and parents and even children that are now grown up that have benefited from the coats that have been donated from this community. It's not me, it's the people in this community, and I've always said, we might be a small community, but we're a community with a big heart, and any time that there is a need, you see people not just open their wallet, but open their heart to help. And you would be surprised how many children don't have a decent coat. They can't help the fact that their parents, that they have a single parent, or they live with a grandparent, or maybe their parent just doesn't have the money because of whatever problems they're having in the home, but a child knows they're cold. And I've always thought that if you can put shoes on their feet and coats on their back, maybe that will give them a head start toward maybe doing better in school and not being bullied. So, it takes a village, and it has here in our community because individuals, organizations, churches, I can't tell you, but this is overwhelming, and you, it's taken, it really has taken the words from me because I don't know how to say thank you enough. I really don't, but thank you from the bottom of my heart for the children. And several years ago, I decided, you know, I'm getting older, my hair's getting grayer, and so I approached, I believe it was Sandy Strayer at Henry County, about getting more involved and helping to distribute because from the get-go, it was done in my dining room and on my carport, and many Sundays, Charles and I spent our days at the laundromat washing coats. And so she agreed, and then from there, she pointed Garrett here later on, to help with the distribution of these coats. And so it does take a village, and y'all are a big part of that village. So, thank you so much. Thank you for what you've done today.
Supervisor Buchanan, Supervisor Dillard, if you all will join our guests down front, and let's see, everyone grab a coat as you go. If we didn't have other agenda items, now would be an appropriate time to adjourn because I don't think we can talk that.
And it was hard to talk without honestly crying because, I tell you, when you see that much generosity coming from our community, it's overwhelming.
Thank you all. Thank all of you involved for the efforts. At this time, agenda item number six, we'll have a monthly report on the delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Bynumstaff. Scott, welcome.
Good afternoon. This is reported as of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, personal property, we collected ninety-one point two four percent of the twenty-three personal property. During the month, we collected sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Real estate, as of October thirty-first, we collected ninety-five point five three percent of the twenty-three real estate taxes. We collected ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars during the month. Since January first, T A C S collected seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars. On our debt set off, we received another thirty-four hundred dollars on November fifteenth. The total for the year is three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars, and so far in the month of November, we've had five D and B stops. We have a judicial, nonjudicial sale scheduled for Monday, December second, right here in the boardroom. We have upwards of forty parcels we have for sale, and I think that's one of the biggest ones we've had in the box.
What time is that sale?
Two P M.
Two P M, okay. Thank you. So, do you want to have any items from Mr. Bynumstaff at this time? Agenda item number seven, consideration of extending the personal property tax payment deadline for the Commissioner of Revenue's office, Mr. Wagner.
Mr. Chairman, before we jump into this topic, if I may, we're going to have a slightly different presentation at this board meeting than we normally do with county staff. A couple of years ago, we started a program called Next of November where we, it's a leadership development program where we empower the next generation of leaders within county government. So, for the full month of November, we take the opportunity to mentor those individuals that we see as future leaders in our organization, and it kind of culminates with today's meeting with them presenting many of the items on your agenda. So, at this time, if it's acceptable to you, I'll turn that over to Mr. J R Powell to take this item.
Mr. Powell.
Yes, sir. Agenda item number seven, Tiffany Harrison, Commissioner of Revenue, requests an extension of the payment deadline for two thousand twenty-four personal property taxes. According to the Henry County Code, all personal property levies and taxes are due by December the fifth of each year. However, Ms. Harrison has indicated that her office faced challenges over the past year, causing a delay in generating the file needed for billing. In light of this, staff recommends that the board consider extending the payment deadline to February fifth, two thousand twenty-five. And just for clarification purposes, Mr. Lyle may want to speak to this, we're not requesting the board to change the due date for the personal property taxes. Per code, that date is still December the fifth. However, we are asking the board to consider extending the payment deadline date. In other words, if it's not paid by February the fifth, then it's considered late.
That's right. I think actually, the due date is October first for real estate taxes, and, oh, anyway, there's a penalty after December fifth, and if you don't, and what we're doing today is just waiving the penalty for the personal property, excuse me, paid after December fifth, you're not changing the date, there's just no penalty.
All right. The board has as part of its working papers confirmation to what has been said in the background material and correspondence from our Commissioner of Revenue. What is the desire of the board as far as the action that we take?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is that just for this year, or is this from now on? This is for just this year?
Just for this year.
Just this year.
Commissioner Harrison's here, if you have any questions you'd like to answer to that, but I believe she's back on schedule next year.
And I'd like to ask you to come up to answer that question because we've done this, I think, a couple of times, and I've even heard some folk mention it may be good to even change the date permanently just for the citizen's sake. I know for you, there's one side of it, but for the citizens, having, you know, several different taxes due at the same time, so if we could kind of speak on that, and if we need to discuss permanently moving it, you know, what would have to take place in order for that to happen, if that's possible?
Yes, so I'll speak to just our process, what we've done to kind of get calls. We did our machinery tools, we implemented a new process with that, we had to put all our data in, all historical data in, carry your data for every business, and then we also had to do vehicle valuation lookups. We had to do sixty percent of those manually out of our seventy-six thousand pieces of property that we had to value, so that took up quite a bit of time. We also had to go back and take motor vehicle fees off vehicles with no tags. That took a little bit of time as well. Next year, we have pricing codes that we're going to set up and different things so we can minimize our vehicle lookups, so we should be on time for next year. We should be in good shape. As far as moving the permanent date, I'll let Scott speak to that. We have two different, like, still kind of working that out, but I'll even speak to when things are due because, you know, it's not my.
Yeah, we have extended three years prior to this, this is the fourth year in a row. A lot of that's due to the previous initial not getting us the information on time. I can honestly say Tiffany, this is her first year, she's done a great job of, you know, improving things and getting things done, but she was behind the eight ball when she started, and things will be better, so hopefully that won't be an issue of things trying to get done. We had a new system, the valuation of vehicles changed from N A D A to
Yeah, they switched the whole process to do like automated manual lookups, but most of our vehicles are not. They're two thousand and five and prior, so that's where our manual lookups came into play with the sixty percent.
N A D A used to drop in, but we had to do it, and then we have some of the old vehicles, it's a lot of manual. But as far as what we're going to do in the future, that's for a future discussion, but I have mentioned to some of y'all that, you know, I always hear that we don't want to be a burden on our taxpayers, but yet we have our two taxes, real estate and personal property, because our real estate's due October one, most people wait until December fifth. Personal property's due December fifth, so if we really want to unburden our taxpayers, we need to move them away from each other, in my opinion. So, that will be a discussion for the future.
Yes, sir.
Right, thank you. Okay, with that, what action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to extend the payment deadline for personal property taxes until February the fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. We'll now take up financial items under agenda item number eight, eight A, an additional appropriation referencing the Drug Court Program for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Mr. Powell.
Commonwealth Attorney Andrew Nestor is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of sixty-six thousand, two hundred dollars received through a grant managed by Piedmont Community Services to cover personnel and office-related expenses for the Drug Court Program.
Okay, as part of our background material, we have a memorandum from the Commonwealth Attorney, Mr. Nestor. What action would the board like to take in regard to this additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation for sixty-six thousand, two hundred dollars for expenses related to the Drug Court Program as requested.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Eight B, an additional appropriation referencing school nutrition budget for the school board. Mr. Powell.
The school board is requesting additional appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to the school nutrition budget for funds received through the reallocation of a fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant. The additional appropriation will cover the purchase of a walk-in freezer for Fielddale Collinsville Middle School, and Dr. Bennett, Bill, and others are here. Should the board have any questions?
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to the school nutrition budget for the purchase of the walk-in freezer for Fielddale Collinsville Middle School.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Eight C, an additional appropriation referencing teacher apprenticeship grant for the school board. Mr. Powell.
The school board is requesting additional appropriation of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, received from elementary and secondary school emergency relief Grow Your Own Teacher Apprenticeship Grant Program. The appropriation will provide an opportunity for current Henry County Public School employees to complete their bachelor's degree and teacher certification through Longwood University.
Okay, we have background material from the school board as well as the action taken from the school board in regard to this. What is the desire of the board in regard to this additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and one dollars received from the Esser Teacher Apprenticeship Grant Program as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I do have one item of discussion. If I could have a representative of the school board come up, or I can ask it from here, and it can be answered. As for the apprenticeship, and I think we're all about, you know, bringing our people up, training, this type of thing, is there a mechanism to make sure that we're keeping those that we're training as far as a contract, or what goes on in that regard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that question under the board. When teachers agree to participate in this apprenticeship, well, excuse me, when employees agree to participate in this apprenticeship program, they has agree your commitment, or they will have to pay funds back.
Okay, thank you. And again, you know, that question was asked of me out in the community primarily as, are we training them, then we lose them to somewhere else? And so, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Eight D, you have a handout that was left in regard to this because complete information wasn't available at the time of the board's package going out. Eight D is an award of contract referencing administration building bathroom renovations. Mr. Powell.
Yes, sir. Staff is asking the board to approve a contract in the amount of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred dollars to Daniel Builders LLC of Danville for the renovation of six bathrooms on the first floor of the Henry County Administration Building. The existing bathrooms are original to the building construction of nineteen seventy-four and are noncompliant with guidelines set by the Americans with Disabilities Act. Following a competitive bid process, Daniel Builders LLC was selected for the project, and funding for the renovations were included in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five capital improvement fund and funds within the administration building maintenance budget.
Okay, the board has had prior background material plus the item left at your desk today. What is the desire of the board in regard to awarding of this contract?
Mr. Chip.
Well, I have a question, and it's, I've asked before, you know, we seem to constantly get these folk from Danville and different places. Do our folk in Martinsville, Henry County just not win these bids? Because, I mean, you know, that's two hundred thousand dollars that's going down to Danville, and we'd love for that money to stay here in Henry County so those folk can eat and spend it, and, you know, here. Once again, just, you know, I've asked it before, what can we do to better ensure that some of our folk get these opportunities to get these bids? And it may not be something you can ask at this moment, but I want to make sure I mention that, and we'll keep that out in the forefront until we start seeing some Martinsville, Henry County businesses, you know, winning some of these bids.
For this specific project and all projects, when we have bids for this, it's advertised in the paper, it's put on our website, any resource that we can think of, if we know of specific vendors who handle jobs as such, we send it to them. This specific project, we did place it out for bid. We had several contractors, local contractors, that came toward the facility, looked at the building, spoke with staff, spoke with our purchasing department, and we had three of the probably seven to nine contractors that came by, three that submitted bids for the project. Two were from Danville, and one was local. Unfortunately, the local one was the highest bidder, and considering taxpayers' dollar, we normally go with the lowest bidder unless there's some unforeseen circumstances, special situations, but, yeah, it's just a matter of boiling down to who submits the best price of taxpayers' dollars for the project.
Okay.
Okay, in regard to that, what of the award and contract, what action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award contract to Daniel's Builders LLC for one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred dollars for the renovation of six bathrooms in the administration building.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion at this point? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Eight E, request for carryover of F Y twenty-four county funds. Mr. Powell.
Staff is asking the board to approve the carryover of committed funds from the fiscal year twenty-four budget year to the current fiscal year twenty-five budget. Staff has prepared the attached list of carryover items by cost center. Items on the carryover list are committed items encompassed or obligated from the prior budget year, but the item was not received or the service was not performed prior to June thirtieth. It also includes unexpended grant funds that may have been awarded in the prior fiscal year and other commitments not completed prior to June thirtieth. This year's carryover request totals ninety-four million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and two dollars and forty cents, which includes interfund transfers of fourteen million, five hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents, and Chief Financial Officer Daryl Jones is here this evening to have any questions on those.
Okay, significant amount of detail that's been provided to us in regard to the request for carryover. In regard to the request for carryover FY '24 county funds, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the carryover funds of $94,453,402.40 from fiscal year 2024 to fiscal year 2025 as requested.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to harp on this again in terms of the questions that I get very regularly on the county budget, the county money that is in reserve, and the money that has been encumbered. And I know we have, I know it's on the, online, it is on, we have a lot of information here about that because, again, I would say my, not necessarily weekly, but definitely monthly, I'm being asked about the amount of money that we talk about. This, oh, the county budget's $94 million, and then we hear $36 million, and then $40 million, and how it's being spent in terms of the percentages, and why we have this much money, and then some things are funded and some aren't. So I'd just like for you to take another minute just to talk about the money that actually that we have that's in the budget lower than $94 million. When I know people hear that, they're going to say, well, Henry County has $94 million, so why are we being limited here or there? So could you just speak to that a minute, please?
Well, the, this carryover is totally separate from the money we have in fund balance. They have absolutely nothing to do with each other.
Okay.
Most of these funds are previously budgeted funds in which we have not expended money. Most of this money is actually grant funds. For example, of this total, 26 million of it is related to Lot 2 of Commonwealth Crossing. That's 100% grant funds that we have not even received yet. We have not expended the money nor have we received that money. That's just carried over the budget that we appropriated to grade Lot 2 of Commonwealth Crossing. 11 million of it is school sales tax money that we are holding that eventually the schools will spend on capital projects as we go forward. Seven million, 7.6 million is debt service related to the adult detention settlement that is, is committed to paying debt service the next two years on the adult detention Eight million is capital projects, including $4 million for broadband that we receive through the, most of it through the ARPA funding. So most of that eight million is grant-related funds we receive through ARPA. Another six million is just a variety of grants. The county has numerous grants, and this is separate from the schools, which have their own grants, but the county itself has $6 million of budgeted grant funds. We have not even received those funds yet. We've committed to grant projects that we've not even expended yet, but once we expended, those funds are budgeted, once we expended, we'll receive those grant funds. The schools have almost $16 million in encumbrances, some of which are grant funds, some of which are not. So when you add up all those totals, you get to close to the 90, well, 14 million is just transfers.
Right.
Just a cross out, so you're really looking at about eight million. So none of that money has anything to do with our fund balance and how much we have to set aside. Most of it's money we haven't even received yet because it's grant money for future projects that we haven't completed yet. They're coming down the pipeline that we've all appropriated either through the regular budget process or through additional appropriations as we have, you know, monthly board meetings. So until those projects completed, they remain in the budget, we expend it, then we ask for reimbursement from the grant agencies for most of these funds. So the fund balance is really a totally separate issue than what this carryover is asking for.
And thank you for the clarification because, again, these conversations come to me, and it's better that you explain it like that than me trying to also explain it. So I just wanted to just, just to clarify that and just, I would say, in very slang terms, just break it down for people when they start seeing these types of figures and maybe not necessarily, and I'm not saying everyone doesn't fully understand, but there are constituents who see numbers like this and they want better clarification, even though I know, again, you have the budget, everything's online for people to see. I just wanted you to just simply clarify it like you did, so thank you for that.
If I could add, you know, kudos to our department managers, like Mr. Jones was just explaining, the bulk of that $94 million was grant funds. And those are funds that our department managers and staff aggressively went out and seek, applied for, went through the process of trying to secure those funds so that we didn't have to provide those funds locally. So that's something that I think is important to make sure our citizens understand that that does look like a very big number, that the majority of all of that is grant funds that was awarded in Henry County.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion or clarification needed? All in favor? It's six zero. Jennifer. Eight F, consideration of revisions to the Henry County Investment Policy. Mr. Powell.
Mr. Chairman, I'm actually going to do this one. I may recall in July, the board approved revisions to the Henry County Investment Policy, which allows the county to maximize investment returns while remaining within the parameters established by the Commonwealth for today. When we're talking about finances, one thing I think the county does really well is making sure we're maximizing the returns on what money we do have in the bank. And another way to do that is what I'm bringing forth to you today. As part of the ongoing effort to maximize those county investment, staff is asking the board to approve the county's participation in the Virginia Municipal Investment Trust, sometimes called a Virginia Mint, a local government investment pool. An LGIP is a short-term investment fund that allows public entities to pool their money and invest it together. LGIPs are designed to provide safe, liquid, and competitive investment options for governments, and it's all within the limitations that the Commonwealth of Virginia sets for localities and how they can invest those funds. A very simple example is, we can't invest our money in long-term bonds or trusts, we can't invest our money in stocks, it can only be invested in short-term investments, no longer than five years. So the county staff is asking you to approve our joining this trust, and this will give the county access to lower fees and more investment options. Even if we do not put any money directly into the trust, we'll be eligible for these discounts on these fees directly through our current investments with Atlantic Union Bank. The resolution will note, as recommended by the Code of Virginia, the county treasurer is ultimately responsible for the investment of county funds. It designates the county, in your resolution, designates the county treasurer as a representative on this board for these investment matters. And I feel like Mr. Jones, myself, can answer any questions again.
Great, thank you for that background material. In regard to the consideration of revisions to the Henry County Investment Policy, what's the pleasure of the board?
Ms. Chairman, through the resolution authorizing Henry County's participation in the Virginia Municipal Investment Trust and affirming the role of the elected treasurer as the chief investment officer for Henry County.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero. Jennifer. That takes us to Agenda Item Number Nine. We have a legislative update in consideration of the 2025 legislative agenda, and we have Heidi Hertz with us today. Heidi, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In this season of gratitude, I want to thank the board for continuing to allow Cozen O'Connor, myself, and my colleague Julia to have the opportunity to work with you. Also, I'd be remiss to not recognize that I'm from a small town, from Ludenburg County, and I see things like this happening in communities like this one and like mine. This doesn't happen everywhere, so it's really special, and I'm so thankful that I was here tonight. Wanted to share just a little preview about what's about to happen, kick off is January 8th. For those of you who keep score on the Virginia General Assembly, we'll kick off our short session, our 46-day session. It's actually going to be on the earliest it can ever be, January 8th, which means it'll end, the earliest it can ever end, which is the third week of February. And what we expect to see this session is a little bit different because it is a non-budget year. We passed the BIM budget last year, so technically the Commonwealth does not need to, does not need to pass another budget. The realities of it are with the surplus that we're seeing with some of the shortfalls in Medicaid, with some of the requests, we have some here from Henry County, we do hope that there will be an amended budget that is passed by this General Assembly. So we expect that this will be, it will be fast-paced, a lot of really hot-button issues. It will move, it will move quickly, but folks will want to be making a name for themselves. If you'll remember, the House currently has a Democratic majority of 51-49, the Senate also with a Democratic majority of 21-19. Next November, there will be an election, again, in Virginia, to, we will elect a new governor. This is Governor Youngkin's last session, and this is different. Other parts of the country, many of them elected a governor in November, or at this past election. We are an off-off-year election for governors. It's us and New Jersey, we're the only ones that do it this way. So we'll elect a new governor, we'll also elect a new House of Delegates, which could swing the power of the General Assembly. We know that Speaker Don Scott, the Speaker of the House, he is looking at sort of his, his delegates in key districts. We know that the majority leader, excuse me, the minority leader, Todd Gilbert, is also looking at some contentious districts for the Republicans, and folks will be wanting to make a name for themselves. We call those brochure bills because they look really good on a mailer or on a brochure. And so we expect there to be quite a few of those for legislators to be making a name, but also getting some recognition from their constituencies. Some of the things that we're also seeing is, as someone has noted from rural Virginia, the split has never been wider between rural Virginia and urban Virginia. So we need to continue to talk about the issues that matter to Henry County, to those that we coalition with in these areas, so that they understand what our priorities are. Looking at your legislative agenda and the things that matter for Henry County, we have some updates and some progress on a couple of these items that I wanted to touch on because those will be ones that we spend a lot of time on during session. One of the first ones is around your land use priorities, around specifically solar. I actually was on a phone call talking about solar and what we'll see in the General Assembly as I was coming in today. We know that there will be additional legislation put forwards to limit local boards of supervisors, boards of supervisors authority to limit solar development. It's the ban on bans, saying that you can't just say no, you have to actually hear those cases one by one. Last year's bill was a 4% that a board of supervisors was required to hear all situations up to the 4% threshold, where if you had 4% of solar in your jurisdiction, then you no longer had to hear those, those cases. Last session, we saw that bill, it came before the local government Senate Committee. Senator Stanley sits on that committee, and we were in constant communication figuring out what that meant for Henry County. I think the last calculation, when it was 10,000, 10,000 acres of land here in Henry County, and that would likely have been on prime industrial development land, not necessarily land that isn't good for forestry or agriculture or economic development. So we know that this will be a priority again for Henry County. We won't be alone. There are other industries and other localities that don't like the ban on bans, but also don't like the General Assembly taking away authority from local elected boards like this. So we'll continue to watch that. We know that that will be something that we deal with again. Luckily, last year, the House of Delegates did put a pause on that bill. They did not pass it, they carried it over to this session, so we know it will be live, and it is something that we're going to be working on. I'll be meeting with the Speaker, Don Scott, to see what his thoughts are, hopefully in the next two weeks, so that we, we know what kind of outreach we need to be doing between now and session. Another priority is around Mayor River State Park. Really thrilled to see that the Department of Conservation and Recreation included funding for Mayor River State Park and what they're asking for in their budget. This is the first time we've seen that, which I think is due a lot, in a lot, to the excitement that has been here in Henry County around it, the event we had last year at Fairystone with their board, with, working with Delegate Phillips, who's met with the DCR Director, Director Wells. Really, their, their commitment has been strong. Typically, how this works is you get the funding, and then they work on the master plan. Director Wells has seen this as a really big opportunity for, for him, but also for the governor to fulfill some promises that were made here, but also looking across state lines into North Carolina and the money that they're drawing down from their version of Mayor River State Park. They're doing these things simultaneously, so asking for the money as the master planning is starting. And I think there's another meeting December 16th to do some master planning work there, and Director Wells is planning to attend that. I hope to be there as well. So our, now, our goal is to get this in the governor's budget. We got it in DCR's budget. They don't get everything they ask for, and so we've had conversations with Secretary of Natural Resources, Secretary Boiles, and the governor's policy team to really prioritize this. What it would do is give FTEs, four FTEs, as well as some one-time costs for equipment and some structures for Mayor River, so we're incredibly excited about that. And then thinking about economic development, you know, one of the things that folks are talking about with the surplus that we're, we're hearing about is that should some of that money be pieced aside to go towards making more site-ready development available to industry that wants to move in? We'll be watching that funding when the governor's proposed budget comes out in December to see if he is using any of that money particularly to go to the EDP or to other avenues for us to be able to secure some of that funding to come and build off of what's already here with the Commonwealth Crossing and others. We work closely with your delegation, whether it be transportation or recreation, local land use, those types of issues, as things come up in their committee, making sure that they understand how this fits into Henry County's legislative agenda, but then also what does it actually mean for the district that they represent. So we'll continue to build on the strong relationships this year. I hope that you see myself and Julia, unfortunately couldn't be here, as sort of an extension of your work. I love when you come into town for Lobby Day, being able to take you around and see not only your delegation, but also folks that should hear from the voice of rural Virginia. These are a lot of complex issues that we'll have, but we look forward to representing your interests and your priorities in 2025. I'm happy to answer any questions or touch on any other specific priorities that you have interested.
I have, hey, nice to see you again. I have, we have the core agenda, and they're listed here. And Mr. Wagner, also, is this legislative agenda, apologize for not knowing the answer to this question, is it online for constituents to see also?
So the draft was included in the, in the packet. Once, once you all approved the final draft agenda, we posted on the website, and last year, we, we mailed a postcard to every single delegate and senator in the Commonwealth with a QR link back to the website. So to answer your question, yes.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And also, we do have our public safety folks here, and it's not a secret how much the board, how much we and the board support public safety. And I do see on here, under the core agenda for public safety, provide funding support for local fire and EMS as recommended by the work group created by, in 2023 HB 2175. Can you just touch on that just a minute? Because it's become, it's becoming more and more an issue, and it, and I was going to speak on this, Mr. Chairman, also in some of my comments in attending VACO, participating in the, the presentation and workshop for that, and it was a very robust group, and a lot of, lot of great discussion, I thought, and the importance of prioritizing the funding. So could you just touch on that for a minute?
And I'll turn, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wagner for some of the details on the work group, but I will say for this item in particular, because it is alleviating local funding, we will need to identify state funding.
Okay.
And what that means is either the governor is going to put something in his budget as a result of this work group that would provide funding to localities to fund these positions, or if that's not the case, then what we'll do is we'll identify legislators who are willing to put that budget amendment on our behalf. In some instances, that's a, a local legislator, so Senator Stanley or Delegate Williams or Delegate Phillips. To put that in, in an ideal situation, it would be someone that, we were looking at a coalition of folks to VACO to identify someone, probably a high-ranking money committee person, to try and put that in so that we have the best chance possible at drawing that money down. So that would be us working through the budget to try So that would be us working through the budget to try and secure those funds.
So in the 2023 General Assembly session, there was legislation passed directing a study of fire EMS funding in the Commonwealth. And the results of that was a study called the House Bill 30, 2175. And the study basically said that the state needed to do more as far as funding for fire, local fire EMS, and specifically, they needed to identify a dedicated funding stream, similarly to, you know, we received the ATO-Locality money, which is a little surcharge on homeowners' fire insurance, for example. They said something similar to that, but needed to be much more intense to allow localities to provide better fire EMS services, particularly hire people to provide fire EMS service. So it's a pretty comprehensive report. So our request here is basically, and it got ignored in the 2024 session, they got the report and did nothing with it. So the request here is do what you said, your report says you need to do in it, which provide more funding for local fire EMS.
And like I said, and Mr. Bryant and I were both in there, and it was, again, a very lengthy and very robust group of individuals and discussion. So thank you for that.
And I'm sure I'll be in Richmond a few times related to this, and probably Mr. Patel will as well, but there's a whole chaos going on in the Department Health right now with the misappropriation of funds and arrest of high-level officials within the organizations. I don't know how all that's gonna play out through the General Assembly, but it's something we're certainly tracking and see how that's gonna impact EMS funding specifically through Department Health. There's even talk about relocating that department under a different, the agency under a different department, and it's a whole gamut of things that could impact how we do things on the local level as far as funding.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll be tracking that.
Thank you.
And like Dr. Kowal said, I was in on that meeting also at the VACO conference. And I do believe that probably Virginia is not the only state that's neglecting EMS, fire, it's throughout the United States. But one thing that I hit on was, you know, was the problem that we in Virginia, plus all counties, just the volunteer organization, it's just, just a thing of the past almost. And part of that's got to do with lack of funding for equipment, but part of it's got to do with lack of dedication for people that wants to be volunteers. But the, the fire departments especially are suffering big time, because they don't get any stifling or revenue or insert from, from the state or from, when they respond to an accident or incident scene. And it makes it real difficult on them, and plus, the fire departments are, just like all of the United States, are lacking in volunteers, just as most, all the rescue squads here in Henry County is, is lacking very much so in running calls. Most of, all the local volunteers are running 30, 35% or less of the calls when they did back in the 90s, where they was running 95, 100% of the calls. And I, I pushed them to try to get the state to emphasize more on doing advertising promotions to promote the volunteerism in Virginia, to, to do things to show how volunteers are really needed, you know? The, the young people, they're not, you have to go, you have to get somebody with a young mind to touch people with a young mind. You know, us old people, we just can't figure that out. So we've got to get these young kids together to figure out how to get these young people invested in doing volunteer work. It, it's a difficult situation all across the board, but, you know, I don't have the answer to it, but I do know that it's, it's a tremendous problem that we've got. And, and like I said, just here in, in our own county, we've got several, well, we've got one rescue squad in the charter, we've got another squad or two that is right on the verge of that, and we've got the other squads that are not far behind. You know, it's just gonna be like a dominoes stick, once one starts falling, the other's gonna start falling. And then it's gonna go over to the paid staff, you know? And, you know, not that I'm against paid staff by no means, but I do hate to see the volunteer organizations that has worked in this county for 100, you know, for, ever since the county's been around, due to this stuff and disappear.
Yeah, we're certainly gonna ask the Commonwealth to help us with that. And, you know, one model that was proposed in this report was to fund local fire EMS similarly to sheriff's departments to the Commonwealth fund, so we'll see how that plays out. I'm not very optimistic that it will, this General Assembly session.
Well, we, we was, we was told, and Ms. Colican bounced for that, the counties need to bombard our legislation with letters and stuff like that, put heat on them, to force them into, to recognize them first, to recognize the need of it. I don't know if these legislations recognize the need that we have for the volunteers. I just don't, don't see that, but we have to get, and it's not only Henry County, but it's all counties in the state of Virginia, the counties itself need to start sending to the legislation, we need this. This is not, we're not asking for it, we're demanding it, we need it, you know? And the state had a $1.3 trillion surplus this year, for most of y'all didn't know. But out of that $1.3 trillion, somewhere right around 500, so 500 something million dollars is what's left, everything else has been accounted for. But some of that money can move around for priorities such as, to me, you know, fire EMS.
Public safety, yes, sir. I, I agree, public safety needs to be a priority. And there have been some models, and maybe that's something I can go back and look at, when Virginia enacted the, the G3, the get out, get a job, give back, you know, that give back. It, it had to do with community college tuition and waiving that for some students, whether or not that really fed into a volunteer pipeline, I don't know. I think that's something I can follow up on. And the other thing we'll do is identify specifically what are Henry County's needs, but I think partnering with someone like VACO, who's able to look at this from a global perspective, we can get the letters to bombard legislators and, and let them know. Because like I shared, you know, there's a big split between rural and urban, but that doesn't necessarily mean we can't get to them, right? We, we know where they work, and we know where their offices are, we can go and, and share our, our point and what we, what we need, so we'll have you.
I wanna kinda, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I do think our local delegates get it, they understand the struggle of our volunteer departments, and even, you know, our career departments with the counties, not just Henry County, but Pennsylvania County, and Patrick and Franklin, and the struggles we deal with, the recruiting personnel, the cost of providing the services. I think they get it, they just, you know, they're only three representatives of a whole lot more.
Delegate Phillips is on public safety, so he'd be someone in particular to make sure that he has it.
And, and, you know, just, just to make it for, Henry County, and our, our county here, the school system's looking back about putting EMT and firefighter one back on regular school agendas. And this year, well, next year, excuse me, next year, April 4th, I think it's on a Tuesday, it's the day before the prom at Bassett. Our, I'm on the board of the Phillicom for Rescue Squad, and our squad is gonna put on a mock accident at the school. And it's gonna involve the, the county service department, the state police, Phillicom for Fire Department, Bassett Fire Department, Air Care, it's gonna be, you know, and we're doing this to promote volunteerism.
Sure.
And, and then, of course, you know, we're doing it on the, the thing of DUIs, basically, about driving, but it's gonna be a big campaign and advertisement for the local volunteers and local paid staff also.
Just a quick comment, I kinda wanna, never thought I'd say Joe Bryant gave me an assist, but he gave me a good assist with, you know, he talked about writing letters and bombarding, you know, the delegates, and, you know, it's kind of what I wanna mention is like, you know, I want to hear the time when we get a win, something tangible. And I think it's great when, you know, we get the lobby, she all go to Richmond, and you communicate and you talk, but, you know, hopefully when you come in next year, you can tell us that, hey, we gotta win. You know, we did this, and this is what came out of it, and this is what's gonna benefit Henry County, because this is a paid service that we provide, and, you know, at some point, we want something that we know came out of this, you know, other than just, you know, having discussion, having conversation, getting people to the table, we want to walk away with a win. And you may have some of those that you could mention now, but if not, you know, hopefully next year, when you come in, you can tell us, hey, this is the win that we got, big or small, but it lets us know that, you know, this method of politicking for Henry County is working, because we as a group, you know, we have to evaluate that, and so we would love something tangible, and we'd love that win, and I wanna thank, you know, Mr. Bryant for that assist right there.
We love to win.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
And I do, and I do think, you know, we'll see, in particular, you know, this session, how Mayor River State Park goes, where as far along as we've ever been in securing the 1.2 million we need for that. Hopefully, that will be a win that we're able to bring home. And unfortunately, sometimes the win is no action, right? So not having that solar siting bill pass was a, a win, however, we know we've, we've gotta win it again. It's, it's, it's not done, it's something we'll have to keep fighting for. And just like each of these items, some of them are very complex, some of them are very specific, and there's an actual sort of point A to point B, you know, where we're trying to go. Others are larger scale, that takes a little bit more time, but we're making inroads, and I completely agree, and, and hope we land some of those wins for you by next year.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me add this, if I may. I, I work with Heidi and Julia regularly, we're in conversation, and particularly during session. I saw it in action on a couple of times in Richmond last year with individual meetings that she set up with DCR, with, we had a meeting with Department of Housing and Community Development. Just getting those connections, getting in with the people who make decisions and expression of viewpoints. So I'd say that's been a win for us. Absolutely, without a doubt, a lot of the work she did for the solar, you know, we have a 1% cap in Henry County, it came really close to going to 4%, and I think some of the efforts that, you know, Cozen did for us helped mitigate that. But on the very last page of our legislative agenda, basically sums up what they do a lot of, is, it simply says, do no harm. You know, don't enact anything that's gonna make it worse on our localities, and so often small localities, that's what we're doing, we're defending our position and trying not to get things worse. It's not necessarily about wins, it's not losing sometimes, and they've been very effective with that.
I, I would just say, at least, once a week during session, I get an email from our, the local government attorneys who say, somebody just put in a bill to do this. And it's, it's, it would be, you know, take away our authority to tax machine and tools, require us to do something that would be $500,000 in this county. And, and, and we all have to immediately, because it just happens on the fly. And you, you know, some committee put this in, and you've got to immediately assess, and, having people like Cozen is just, is invaluable, because you call them and say, what's going on with this, what committees are gonna go to next, is it, is it real, or is it gonna go away? And they can help you assess that, because some of these things, I mean, are, it's just stunning what people who, I, I know they probably have good intentions, but they don't realize the impact on local governments and the services we provide if they change these little things to help one constituent that has a complaint.
Thank you.
With that, as far as board action, what motion would someone like to put forth as far as the approval of the 2025 legislative agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the 2025 legislative agenda and send it to our Virginia General Assembly representatives.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is 6-0, Jennifer. Heidi, thank you for being here today, and thank you for not treating this as urban. You, you drew a line of the distinct difference between rural and urban. Okay, that takes us to agenda item number 10, and before I take comments from the board, I'm gonna offer our county attorney a moment as to a memo that's been placed at your desk for your review, and we'll come back and take some action after you have a opportunity to digest this. And we have a upcoming meeting, the, the December meeting moves to December 17th. So, Mr. Wild.
Yes, Supervisor Pruitt asked me to draft a policy regarding remote participation in the meetings. And we've had several meetings over the years where members have participated remotely, but they cannot vote, they can't make motions. This, the Code of Virginia does anticipate that board members can participate remotely, and, and it specifically outlines how you can do that, and, and one of the, it says that the board must adopt a policy. It doesn't have to be an ordinance, you can just make it a part of your bylaws, but the board has to adopt a policy, and, and it specifies what that policy can be, and must be, really. And so it would, the important factors are of it is that the board member would tell the chair ahead of time, he would dial in on a phone or on a video connection, and they could do that up to three times a year for almost any reason. And, and the only, if the board adopts this policy, the only reason to vote that the person couldn't do that is if the connection was so poor it couldn't understand them or they couldn't participate reasonably. There could be, if the board member has a more long-term disability or illness, that three-meeting limit does not appear to apply under the code, so they could participate in more than three in a calendar year. So, and calculating the three, I, I put in three, it's, the code says 25% of the meetings is the maximum number. That is 25% of our regular meetings, of course, we have additional meetings, but I just put the limit at three, because that's, we regularly have 12 meetings a year. So that's where I came up with that number, but I guess that's up to interpretation if you count all the other meetings we have besides our regularly scheduled three meetings.
Well, thank you for the background, and I would encourage all the board members to look this over, since we just saw this today. Make notes, be prepared to discuss it December 17th. And should we find a conclusive action on December 17th at our organizational meeting, as we set that date, and we'll set that date as well at our December 17th meeting, we will make it inclusive in our bylaws, so that a way we can kind of do a one-and-done action on that. Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
All right, good. Thank you, Mr. Wild. I'll now take comments from the board, beginning with Dr. Kowal.
I have a handful of things, I'll try to go very quickly. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to participate in the governor's, make sure I read it correctly, the governor's 2024 Summit on Rural Prosperity. Glad to tell you that when the governor was making his remarks, he did call out Commonwealth Crossing in the state of Virginia, and how well that, that was going. So shout out to Henry County, at Marsland, Henry County for that. And the other things that were on broadband came up, the same things we hear about, not just in Henry County, but all over Virginia, and, and really nationwide, transportation and housing, the, the energy conversations were there in the presentation, I did attend one of those, economic development. I'm just trying, I'm just reading over briefly what was, what was offered there, healthcare came up, energy collaborations, the Hurricane Helene recovery efforts were pretty amazing in southwest Virginia. And I had the opportunity also to visit the hatchery that was there, and, and just see the literal, the brown and rainbow trout that is used to stock our rivers is amazing. And there are a million fish there and more, so that, that was pretty amazing. So thank you for that opportunity, and Henry County was represented there hopefully very well. The other thing is that the, the opportunity to participate at VACO, Virginia Association of Counties, and we, like I said earlier, I participated in the, the presentation on public safety, and then also the one for the, the financial, the, the entire budget for Virginia. And yes, it is very extraordinary how well Virginia is doing. And at this, at the end session, they, they recognized the counties in the state of Virginia who completed, Travis, Mr. Pruitt, make sure I say this correctly, please, but completed the Virginia County, the Virginia, the VACO graduation, and it's called the Supervisor Certification Program. And our, Mr. Pruitt here was, was recognized for completing and graduating in that program, so we just wanna recognize him today. I don't know, Mr. Pruitt, you had to go every month or go through courses online and in, in person?
It was a full-year program, and each quarter was broke up into some in-person and Zoom meetings, but it was, it covered the whole gamut of budgeting, zoning, planning, lead- planning, leadership. Um, it was a tremendous course, and I recommend anyone that, that has the time to put it in their schedule to be able to do it, to, uh, take advantage of it, because it was, it was very eye-opening.
So we just want to congratulate and recognize Mr. Pruitt for that, for completing. So congratulations.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
All right, Mr. Pruitt?
I don't have anything.
Uh, Mr. Dilly?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One, I want to, uh, point out those, again, with some of that new shares, I haven't seen those shirts, but those things look really nice, and, you know, want to commend them for always not wanting to serve our county the best, but also looked really good, and want to thank Ms. Jennifer Gregory for making sure we were good, you know, getting into the Omni and at VACO, and taking care of all of those things behind the scenes, and making sure we didn't have any issues when we got there. And then last, I want to thank Brandon Martin for the fitness court down at the Smith River Complex, you know, took the lead on that, uh, brought that to fruition, and, you know, seemed like everybody's really excited about that, and hopefully we could have many, many more announcements like that, that creates the excitement across Henry County, but also allow people to begin to have a better quality of life. So just want to appreciate you for that. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Buchanan, Mr. Wild.
Just, just a quick thing, I did have a chance to attend the VACO conference also, and it was a good conference. I think, uh, Dr. Cobbler's said just about everything that I need to say, but it was, it was a good, interesting, a vastly learning education for me, uh, on the state budget, how it works, uh, and how Virginia's been one of the better states dealing with their money. So I give them diddles for that.
Rated number one, actually.
Yep, we are. Was Texas number two, I think?
I don't know who's number two.
But we, we, it was between one and two, but we're one now. So.
Great.
That's all I've got to say.
All right, uh, thank you. Uh, I don't have anything specific, uh, if, uh, Mr. Powell or Mr. Wagner will, uh, cover to make sure our calendars that we're all in sync on that as you offer your comments.
Absolutely. Uh, first of all, I'd just like to invite everyone, Bassett Fire Chief Junior Lynch intends to have the new ladder truck that was recently delivered to Henry County here after the closed session, um, in between the two meetings. He intends to have the fire truck parked out by the flagpole of the board. We'd like to stop by and take a tour of that, and I believe Mr. Lynch intends to address the board under matters presented by the public at 6:00 PM. So invite you to stop by and take a tour of the fire truck. Um, just a reminder that the offices, uh, will be closing at noon tomorrow, on Wednesday, and will remain closed on Thursday and Friday, recognizing the Thanksgiving Day holiday. And then our December meeting is early, as the chairman mentioned earlier. It will be, uh, on Tuesday, December the 17th, at the previously scheduled time, so it's December the 17th.
Mr. Wagner, do you have anything?
I don't know, thank you.
All right, uh, with that, uh, that will take us to agenda item number 11. If someone will cite the, uh, items allowed by the Code of Virginia under the Freedom of Information Act to allow us to go into closed meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, the board convenes in a closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, 2.2-3711A1, for discussion of appointees to the Public Service Authority, Anchor Commission, Building Code, Board of Appeals, the Fire Code, Board of Appeals, and the Ninth District Development Financing Incorporated, uh, 2.2-3711A7 for discussion pending legal matters, 2.2-3711A3 for discussion of the acquisition disposal of real estate, and 2.2-3711A5 for discussion as of yet unannounced industries.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. I'll see you all upstairs in five minutes. Came out of closed meeting on a motion by Ms. Buchanan, and a second by Mr. Pruitt. Uh, Mr. Powell, will you forward, please?
Yes, sir. Board members, to the best of your knowledge, only public business matters law exempted from open meeting requirements in the section 2.2-3711 were heard, discussed, or considered in closed meetings. How did you vote, Mr. Adams?
Uh, yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Can you just begin?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dilly?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Pruitt, I believe that you have a, uh, countywide appointment, uh, for the PSA for the board's consideration.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to appoint Marcus Stone to another four-year term on the Public Service Authority Board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six, uh, zero, Jennifer. Mr. Wagner or Mr. Powell, are there any items, uh, coming out of closed meeting, uh, that we need to consider prior to a recess? Okay, board members. If not, we will stand in recess and, uh, start our evening session promptly at six. I'll call this 6:00 PM session of the November 26, 2024 meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors, back to order from a, uh, recess of our afternoon meeting. Like to welcome all of our visitors, remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public, that we'll take up, uh, as agenda item number 15 tonight, uh, in our meeting. Again, welcome, everyone. Uh, thank you for coming out and participating in your, uh, county government and its functions. Our first, uh, business item tonight is agenda item number 12, general highway matters. We have with us Lisa Hughes and David Kaiser from BDOT. Welcome.
Thank you. Very shortly, uh, this evening, mostly we're doing so much need to brush button, and we're trying to finish up our moment. Uh, next month, I can give you an update on the two projects that the bids were open last month, and, and then January, the Commonwealth Transportation Board will release the Smart Scale scores, so that'll be upcoming. But we're here if you need anything or have any concerns.
Anyone have any items from Ms. Hughes at this time?
I just have one, Lisa. I thought about this again, the ingress into the Henry County Administration Building.
Yes.
We had talked about that before. Where is that?
Yeah, that, that's still one of our long, long range of goals to do. Uh, we've got just a small amount of, of those type of safety improvements that we can do, so we're, we're trying to, to address the most critical as we can.
That you have it on the radar?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number 13, uh, we'll conduct a public hearing for rezoning application R-24-12, Edwin and Iris Gillespie. We have with us tonight, uh, for the background material on this, our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Lake Clark. Mr. Clark?
Hey, this property is located on the south side of Valley Drive, trendy addresses of 217 and 319 Valley Drive in the Blackberry District. Property shown on tax map 3927, that's lot 12F. The applicant is requesting a rezoning, 2.67 acres, from suburban residential district to agricultural district A1, and the applicant wishes to use the property for agricultural purposes. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended approval of this request.
I will open public hearing to take input on this at 6:02 PM. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this rezoning application? Is there anyone seeing and hearing no indication as such? I will close the, uh, public hearing at 6:03. In regard to this, uh, rezoning application, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the rezoning request as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number 14, uh, public hearing for rezoning application R-24-13, John K. Adams. Mr. Clark?
Okay, this property is located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Stone's Dairy Road and Bittersweet Drive, it's also in the Blackberry District. Property shown on tax map 2598A, Lot A. The applicant requests a rezoning from suburban residential district to rural residential district, and the applicant wishes to place a manufactured home on the property. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended denying the rezoning request. Planning commission's opinion was that the character of the area supported either remaining suburban residential or possibly mixed residential, but not the requested rural residential zoning.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this at 6:04 PM. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this rezoning application? Anyone? I have a brief policy statement to read as you're coming to the podium. This is a time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. When you come to the podium, state your name, and of course, the subject matter is this rezoning, and the district in which you live, and by coming to the podium, you've agreed that you will exhibit respect for the board and its members. You'll receive the same consideration from the board. Please, um, try to keep your presentation to no more than five minutes.
Uh, yes, John Adams, uh, Blackberry District, just talking to the rezoning. Uh, I talked with Mrs. DeHard, who was purchasing the land, and at this time, she's unable to financially do a, uh, double-wide, so, uh, right now, at this time, she's, we're not, she won't be able to do that. So I'm going to hold off on rezoning for that mixed residential until she have the finances to do it later, because I know, you know, the board, what this outcome probably will be, just wanted to let it be made clear that she probably wouldn't have the finances to do it at this time.
Okay, and, uh, are there others wishing to address the board under this rezoning application? I'll close the public hearing then, seeing no indication, it's 6:06. Uh, Mr. Clark, if I could ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Um, so is, is there, um, from a property standpoint, and the boundaries and the adjoining property, uh, everything in the character that community, uh, community is why this decision was made?
Yeah, sure. The, the planning commission, of course, they all visit property, they are familiar with the area before they come to the meeting. The main zoning in that area is suburban residential. There's been, uh, one rezoning on Bittersweet, which is right across from this property, that was also the mixed residential. There is one other property nearby that was, um, is rural, but it was on, uh, Sandal School Road, and it's sort of behind another residence there, so it's not right on the road. Planning commission was comfortable, of course, with leaving it its own the way it is, and they did discuss it at length, uh, the possibility of rezoning it to mixed residential to match the other property in the immediate area that's already been rezoned, and the applicant at this time wasn't interested in that. Um, we did offer that as an option all the way up until this moment. The applicant could amend that request, to ask for mixed residential, and the planning commission made it clear that they would have recommended approval of that request.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Clark, did I understand them to say that they wanted to, uh, rescind? Rescind the application now?
I'm not sure I heard that right. Did you want to, did you want to remove the application, or you just wanted to let the process go forward?
Let the process, can we, can it be rezoned today for mixed residential?
Yes.
Reapply?
No, you could do it today. You could amend your request to mixed residential today, as we talked about, planning commission.
Can we do that?
You absolutely could, and the planning commission made it clear that if the applicant wished to amend his request to mixed residential, that they would have recommended approval of that request.
So you have no problem with them if they rezon for mixed?
I support that request.
So, so that I'm perfectly clear of this, we're now, if there is a motion voting as to whether or not to allow this to go from suburban residential to mixed?
Yeah, the applicant just stated that he was willing to amend his request to go from suburban residential district to mixed residential district, instead of rural, and the planning commission was very clear that if that was the case, they would recommend approval of the request, and from staff standpoint, we absolutely support that request. Uh, once it's rezoned, it's rezoned permanently until another request, but if the applicant, 10 years, 20 years, whatever down the road, wished to, uh, place a, uh, manu-, a double-wide manufactured home on a permanent foundation there, if we rezoned that request today, there'd be no need to come back. All they need is a building permit at that time.
Okay, thank you. Well, okay, we've conducted a public hearing, and that does change the, uh, the landscape, so to speak, on this. This is in my district, uh, and I am fine with staff recommendation, along with applicant's, uh, uh, desire to rescind what was in front of you prior to tonight, and, uh, I would support, uh, the property being rezoned, mixed residential, if someone would make that motion on my behalf.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, um, approve the rezoning request, um, as modified to mixed residential.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six, uh, zero, Jennifer. Uh, that takes us to it. Uh, agenda item, uh, 15, matters presented, uh, by the public. Uh, is there anyone wishing to, uh, address the board under matters presented by the public? I know that we have some from Bassett Fire Department here tonight that, uh, had indicated that they, uh, desire to, uh, speak to the board.
You've got a hand here as well.
And I see another hand. Uh, uh, give these folks just a moment, and then we'll, uh, take you. Thank you. Uh, and for the record, please identify yourself, although we know who you are, but, uh, identify yourself for the record.
My name is Mike R. Stone, and I'm the president of Bassett Fire Department. I have with me Chief Junior Lynch of the Bassett Fire Department.
Blackberry District.
I'm in the Recrete District, and we also have Deputy Chief Lee Cooley with us. And, uh, we're not here to complain about noise, or barking dogs, or anything like that, we're here to thank you, uh, for that truck that you see sitting out there. Um, we'd like to thank the Henry County Board of Supervisors, uh, Tim Hall, Dale Wagner, and Matt Tatum for all of their assistance, and, uh, the funding that went into this, this major, uh, project, uh, that took longer than what we thought was, we were going to take. But, uh, we owe a great deal of gratitude to, to you guys for your trust in us, uh, to, to maintain this piece of apparatus that we've, we've purchased, and you can rest assured that it is in good hands. We will take care of that truck, and the entire county, uh, will, can be proud of what you have done for this, for this county. While I have your ear, uh, I would also like to thank all of you guys for all the support that you give to all the volunteers in this county, uh, rescue and fire both. We all worked hard to train, to stay updated, to keep good, uh, newer, newer equipment, and a lot of that comes from the efforts that you give to us, and the funding that you, that you supply to the, uh, to the different groups every year, and would like to thank you all for that. I hope that everybody got a chance to, to see this truck, we might be proud of it, and, uh, those that got to ride in it, I was thinking as it was going up with the blue lights under the, under the ladder, it looked almost like a carnival ride at the beach, but, uh, it is, it is a fine truck, and we will take care of it, and, you know, it's nice to have it if you need it, and, but we hope we never need it. Uh, with that, I'll hand it over to Junior.
I'll just, uh, echo what he said. I just want to sincerely thank each and every one of you, Dale, of course, Tim Hall, Matt Tatum, for helping us on this. Uh, this absolutely would have been a project that we could handle, uh, hot dog sales and hamburger steaks, and selling raffle tickets, you know, that, that helps, but that doesn't buy, that doesn't buy equipment like that, and, uh, again, sincerely thank you, and, uh, I was impressed with Jim and Joe both, uh, I think, uh, Joe outdone you, he went the full 95, I think you went about 80ish or so. I think you went about eightyish or so.
I don't know. I left it up to late.
I was impressed. That was, that was impressive.
Well, I basically did it on a dare from Bill Martin in the back.
But again, thank you all, and thank you for your continued support. We couldn't do it without you.
Would you, and you don't have to quote dollar figures, but would you, for the record and those listening, the prepaying of this truck versus what the actual expenses would be when the start of this project was three years or so ago, up until what the expenses would be now?
This truck, when we signed the contract in November of 21, we paid in full. It would have been over $1.2 million. We saved about fifty or sixty thousand dollars by paying in full. That got it just a little bit under 1.2, and today, that truck out the door has gone up to 2.2 or 2.3 million dollars for the exact truck. It's almost double the price. It's, it's just, it's crazy.
It's mind-blowing.
It's mind-blowing.
Yeah. Thank you all so much. Thank you for what you all do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did see another hand under Matters Presented by the Public. Gentlemen back here, if you'd like to come forward, please state your name and district in which you live.
My name is Barry Moxley. I live in the Irishwood, Irishwood District. I actually live on Centerville Road, 57 Lenny's Court. I know firefighters say they won't hear about the noise of dogs, but I am here because of noise and how my life has been disrupted, just like that wheels. I would like, I made a couple of extra copies, if I could hand them to a couple of you guys.
Sure. If you would get Mr. Powell to distribute things.
I would really like Mr. Dill to get one too. Here's just a few more. I've got a few more, if I would like to have one.
If you will, just make sure that we have one for the record.
So, I would like to start off by just saying, this front page right here, this is a meeting I was invited to at the Chatham Courthouse. What had happened was the land behind my house proposed to be a solar farm. It's about six hundred, maybe over six hundred acres of solar farm. I've got property there. I've got right at 2,000,000 feet of property line that run right beside the solar farm. The biggest thing was, it came in and really, I never knew anything about it. There was no zoning meetings. There were no planning meetings. If you read, the first guy I came in contact dealing with this project, his name was John Regone, and it is a US-based company, it's Caden, Caden Energy, and it said, "Interjects is an Israel-based company with offices in Richmond and Washington DC." Regone, according to his letter by Regone, this was sent to the Planning Commission, the project would generate roughly $900,000 in taxes. During construction, the project would create, create nearly 200 jobs, according to Caden Interjects. So, let me just, let me just stop right for a second. The company now is Interjects Renewables. They made out like, they didn't know who Caden, Caden Electric was. They made out like they didn't know who John Regone was the whole time. John Regone, it was an accident that I met him in the beginning, but John told me in the very beginning, he said, "Barry, you'll, you will be affected by this project." He said, "We definitely need to do something to take care of you." That's the reason I was invited to the meeting in Pennsylvania County, because he knew I was being highly affected by this project. I live on a farm where I've raised eight kids. Just hold that road right here, these are all my kids and my wife, and we've all been super affected by this project. But long story short, as I go on, if you'll read the bottom paragraph here before I move on, I don't have a lot of time. It said, "The solar farm will be split between Henry and Pennsylvania Counties, and Regone pointed out after the meeting, there will be some property line issues that will be addressed." At the meeting Thursday, it was Barry Moxley, that's me, of Henry County, who said, "The solar farms proposed property line is roughly 250 feet from my house." When I sat down to eat breakfast in the morning, Mr. Dill has been in my house, he knows. I can see the solar farms from, not just from my house, but all the way over to Axon Road. I can see the whole thing, the way the elevation of my house is, I see every one of them. Moxley said at home to mom and his great-grandmother, and he has been working with Regone to address issues of the line. That is an issue that will be addressed in time. Henry County has, has, has not started this progress, Regone said. The project is supposed to be operated by mid-2021. So, Mr. Clark knows John Regone came in to do the dirty work, and all of a sudden, he's fired, and there was another gentleman out there, got his name, but he was fired also. If you turn to next page, I want to show you what an inverter looks like. So, you're on page three now. Please look at page three. This is an inverter. And I just want you to know, Mr. Dill has stood for Mr. Pitcher right here, this front computer outside the door, it's going into the main building, to this inverter. If you turn to next page, this is the information I got from Interjects website, Interjects Renewables website. It's talking about will-out here doors. The only major components of the solar project that are not silent are inverters, but the noise that emit is comparable to a commercial HVAC unit. This is generally no noise beyond 100 feet from the inverter, and we design our projects so that the inverters will be sufficient, this is from any residential property or dwelling. Also, the inverters are mostly inactive at night. First of all, in the summertime, they are not inactive at night. This is starting since April, the beginning of April, this is starting. If you'll turn to the very next page, this is page right here, please look at it. So, on this page right here, this is the distance from me sitting at my kitchen table, not my property line, but the kitchen table, and you'll see the numbers over here, nine, 10, 11, 12. That's, that's the way the GPS put it in, it just started with nine. If you'll look at these right here, these are the inverters from my kitchen table. Number nine is 0.47 miles. I give you the coordinates of these inverters on this property. If you'll go down to number 11 and number 12, 0.19 and 0.14, number 13, 0.20. If you move down, I got a special note. I said, "I have 15 inverters within a mile of my kitchen table, nine within a half a mile of my kitchen table, with a total of 18." A total of 18 within 1.20 miles of my kitchen table. Eighteen is the total I can get due to a creek crossing, but there are more inverters, not for sure how many more, but I could not reach. Note, the next note, number 13, 0.20 miles from my kitchen table, is only 51 feet from my property line. The picture of the inverter that you saw earlier is only 51 feet from my property line. Number 11 is only 450 feet from my property line, if you look at that next note.
Mr. Moxley, I've been liberal with the time, so if you can kind of move us along, we usually, our speakers are about five minutes, but...
I, I, I understand exactly, but I just wanted to know something.
And I realize this is a whole lot of information if you're gonna go through it page by page.
It is. But I will tell you this, the county needs to know what they're letting into our county. It has been one lie after another lie. Mr. Clark even told me himself that he knows I was not treated fairly on this deal. He knew I would be a problem, but nobody, nobody came to see me in the beginning and say, "Hey, we getting ready to build a solar farm here." You all remember, I'm sure you remember, I know Mr. Clark remembers, when Co. Gentry's was coming in with the steam plant, Mr. Dill, you probably remember Co. Gentry's, when they was coming in with the steam plant, the first thing they did, they came to my front door and they said, "Mr. Moxley, you're gonna be affected by this plant. It's gonna be 300 yards from your kitchen door." They flew me to Wisconsin. I came back from Wisconsin, he said, "What do you want to do about it?" I said, "What should I do?" He said, "You shouldn't live here." He said, "Here, we'll give you X amount of dollars, you move, we'll build a steam plant, you, you'll be happy, and you won't have to worry about it." Nobody ever contacted me of this project. I don't know why the county did, even in that first part, when John said that county, Henry County hasn't started that part yet, why wasn't I contacting? This timeline here is very super important. If you can't let me explain it tonight, I advise you to please read this on your spare time to let you know what's happening to our county. I'll move back here then, since I don't have a lot of time. I want you to go to this picture right here, this water. This was a flood. They built a road on the lower part of my property, not on my property, it was on their property, but it made it down. You can't really tell, but if you see this green here, this is actually supposed to be a fence line, it's only six inches of fence post sticking above the water. This water pushed completely back up on my farm, way back up. I've got an electrical fence, my electrical fence box, it, it shorted out. I expressed my concerns to Interjects Renewables, they just sort of laughed it off, like, "Well, we can't help it, that's just what happens." That was one incident. And I think it was supposed to be another, it was supposed to be another picture, but there's another picture that I had of dealing with the smoke. The smoke was absolutely, I don't know, y'all seen the picture of the smoke? You don't have to, Mr. Dill?
It was prior to that.
Okay. This, this picture right here, the smoke, when they started clearing the land, the smoke was absolutely awful. I realized that, you know, you can burn, you're supposed to be able to burn natural stuff that comes off the land. I've got pictures of it burning, trash, plastic, jugs, you name it, I've got pictures of it being burnt. What made it so bad, if the wind was coming from the southwest, my house got tore, tore by the smoke. My wife, my son, sitting in the back, one of my sons, he's 17 years old, when she was pregnant with him, she was sick, they diagnosed a stage four Hodgkin's. One of the chemo drugs they used to treat stage four Hodgkin's is bleomycin. Bleomycin caused severe scar tissue on the lungs. Halfway through her treatment, she had to stop, but smoke is a thing that really irritates her lungs. I expressed multiple times, I said, "Can y'all do anything about the burden?" I said, "It's just really bad. No pay, no mind. The dust from the vehicles coming in and out was so bad. One day, it was so bad, when I spit, my spit was brown, and I know you're sitting there going, "This guy is exaggerating." I got on my truck, I rode over to Barker's Junkyard, that's the main interest to this solar farm. I went over to Barker's, I talked to Joel, I said, "Joel, the dust is terrible." It ain't gonna tell how many times I've asked him to get a water truck. I tried to be neighbor-like, I never called the state police on them, none, and I know the state police called on me multiple times, blocking the road. Joel said, "It's nothing we can do." Well, they had a Hispanic crew that came in for lunch when I was over there. I'll never forget this. And I looked at the Hispanic crew, and their whole face here, from their nose in the water was just like mud, from the dust they was eating. And I asked one of them, I said, "How y'all doing?" He said, "We keep asking for a water truck. They won't do anything to help us." They never once got a water truck the whole time of that project. This picture right here is a picture that's on Interjects website. This is the solar farm. This is what they portray to people that it looks like. You look at this picture right here, this will tell you what it really looks like. I've worked my whole life to have this place. I've got a house there, I had just built a new shop, and I've had multiple people come out, they say the value of my property, no matter what, they say at least 50%, not only that, but they said, "Who would even want to buy and live here?" Mr. Dill, you know yourself, you can testify to noise. If y'all would give me a second, I just want the people of Henry County to know what I live with every day, not just me, but Mr. Crisco back here in the back, that has 500 acres. I've been on his front porch multiple mornings now, and it is just as bad. The only thing about him, he doesn't have the sight, but he has the sound. If you just bear with me, I think this is super important. And I want you to know, I had a decimal machine, that I took a machine so I could calibrate my speaker so it would be accurate of what it really sounds like. Nobody should have to live with this, day in and day out, mentally, physically, it is just absolutely wrong. And I have been my, I have tried my best to be neighbor-like and polite, but this is unpalable, and nobody wants to help. I'd like to read one other article before I give up, but please, if y'all would look at that timeline, it is super, super important to read that timeline I just gave you. Read this important, I don't think it'll be the last time you see it. I want to read this article right here. This law, this, this following statement, this is from a law firm in Virginia. It says, "When a business enterprise, even though lawful, becomes obnoxious to office of neighboring dwellings and renders enjoyment of the structures uncomfortable by virtue of, for example, smoke, cinders, dust, noise, offensive odors, or obnoxious gases, the operation of such businesses in a nuisance may diminish value of realty. The condition also may interfere with some right incident to the ownership or possession of real property. Such interferes may be accomplished by substantially impairing the occupant's comfort, convenience, and enjoyment of his property, causing material disturbance or annoyance in this use of the realty." I just go to show you, I do have the noise part. I do have to decrease value of my property. I have reached out, I don't know what else to do at this point, but I have to try to look after what I've invested in my whole life. Mr. Dill, you know yourself what the noise, I will say one thing about Mr. Dill. He did come out to my property twice, and he did meet with me on it, on the issue. Before I leave, Interjects Renewables, I'm gonna just tell you what kind of company they are. They claim they're here to help the community, and nobody in Axton got a job at that place. Fry fencing, I tried my best to get them to do the chain link fence, and they wouldn't even give it to them. Everything they hire for us, most everyone was out of town except Red Oak Equipment. Red Oak Equipment was an excavating company. Red Oak Equipment accused me of shooting at their employees, and that bullets was flying around the machinery when they was clear-cutting the land. This happened like on, and it's in the timeline, I didn't have time, because I didn't want to take that time. In the timeline, it'll tell you the dates and everything. I can't remember what was in the timeline, it say it was Tuesday at 3 o'clock, they accused me of shooting at the employees on the equipment. The police showed up at my house on Wednesday at 4 o'clock. Now, the days might be wrong, but the time is right, you'll have to look at the timeline. They showed up at my house, you could tell the cop was nervous, because I live off the road, Mr. Dill's been in my house, I live off the road, you could tell, man, this guy shooting at people, and I'm showing up. He gets out the cop car, he walks up to him, he introduces himself and tells me what he's there for. I had a client with me, meet me at my house. The client, I know Mr. Clark knows the client, it was Don Bradley, I was just, I did all those storage units right there on Interject right before he did Axon School. Mike Austin just did an inspection on the final 10,000 square feet of building I just did there. Don was sitting there talking, and now here I am, being accused of shooting at their employees. I've got the police report, I've already turned it in to the guy that's representing me, because it is not correct. They should have never done that and put me in that spot. Come to find out, the next morning, my son and the other employees went down to the guy operating the esca- operating the excavator and said, "Why did y'all accuse those of shooting at y'all?" He said, "Well, man, we heard gunshots." He said, "Y'all weren't shooting, dirt was flying." My son, Michael, said, "No, nobody was shooting at you." He said, "I was here when my brother was shooting." That's his brother right there, he reloads. Every bullet that leaves that gun goes into a map that goes into a plastic bag for data. He is super about reloading. The cop looked at, "I shoot range," he said, "Y'all were completely safe." The guy with the excavator, he said, "Well, the reason we said that, we knew, if we told them we was being shot at, we would get to go home with pain and not have to work." But this is just a BS that I have put up with the whole time I've lived there. And me, and before I close, it's not right for me or Mr. Crisco back here, the money we've invested, the taxes that we pay, yeah, maybe we ain't paying $900,000 or whatever, InterJaxx Renewables, but one thing about it, I do know, we're honest people. I've been on the fire department, Axon Fire Department, for over 28 years now, I'm a life member. I try to help in the community, and it just is not right to be treated this way, and especially to know and know in the beginning that this project was coming and was going to affect me like it did. Mr. Clark said, "Barry, I knew it was going to affect you more than anybody in Henry County." But nobody had the clue, but I want to know, everyone of you that's sitting on there today, you are more than welcome to come to my house and see it for yourself. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Moxley.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is anyone else wishing to address the board on the Matters Presented by the Public? Anyone else wishing to address the board on the Matters Presented by the Public? Seeing and hearing no indication. Mr. Clark, I would imagine the board may have questions that they would ask you somewhere along the line, and I appreciate your opinion. Mr. Wagner, are there any items that we need to consider before adjournment? Mr. Powell? Board members? I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Everyone have a good evening and a happy Thanksgiving.